There's the out of body voice. Good evening, everyone, to our planning commission meeting on July 20, 2021. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with ordinance number 20 dash A 16, an ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID-19 disaster. Opportunities for public, for the public to access and participate in the electronic meeting will be posted on the album or dot org forward slash community forward slash county calendar when available. And with that, Madam, would you call the, would you establish call, call the, the order to see if we have a quorum, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Carazana? Mr. Keller?
Present.
Ms. Firehawk?
Here.
Mr. Randolph?
Present.
Mr. Vivence?
Present.
Ms. Moore?
Do we see her? And this wasn't the day. Who was the day?
Mr. Clyburn? Mr. Clyburn there?
He's not here.
He's not.
Not. Okay. Thank you.
So with that count, we will go, are there any, we have a quorum. Are there any, any matters from the public that listed on the agenda? Hearing none. This evening, we don't have any, we also don't have any, any items on the consent agenda. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Charles Rapp to introduce our first, our visitor and first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Tonight is an exciting start to our, our meeting. We, we have Ms. Alice Roucher from the University of Virginia. She is the university architect and she is here this evening to just speak to us about their updated plan for the Ivy corridor, the master plan for that area, some of the projects that have recently been developed and discussed, provided every view of that exciting project. So with, with that, I will turn it over for her for the presentation.
Welcome. Welcome to our meeting, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Let me sure you can all share, see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. That looks good to you?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So thank you and good afternoon, everyone. I'm very pleased to be able to share with you our current planning and design for the Emmett Ivy Corridor. So I just have to say that although I'm here today representing the university's efforts, I really want to stress that I have an army of dedicated colleagues and collaborators in the offices of the president, provost, chief operating officer, facilities management, the University of Virginia Foundation, and the Office of the Architect for the University, in addition to our talented consultants, whom I would just like to quickly name. They include Dumont Janks Biohabitats, Oma Van Sweden VHB, Hopkins Architects with VMDO Architects for the School of Data Science, and Deborah Burke Partners with Hanbury for the UVA Hotel and Conference Center. As you will see, there's been much careful thought and consideration that it's gone into this design, and we are not doing this work in a vacuum. Every step along the way, we have coordinated with the surrounding municipality and our neighbors, and I'm excited to share our progress with you today. But first, I just thought I'd give you a little background. No doubt, you've heard a lot about the Emmett Ivy Corridor over the last year or so. In fact, President Ryan's 2030 strategic plan, open grounds at the Emmett Ivy Corridor is number eight under key initiatives, coincidentally, the new School of Data Science at number nine. But why now, you ask? The University of Virginia Foundation first began acquiring parcels in 1983, with the first parcel at the corner of Copley Road acquired, sorry, with the final parcel at the corner of Copley Road acquired in 2017. There were many studies in the ensuing years because it was always acknowledged how strategic this parcel was, but this was the first time we were able to contemplate the full 14 acre parcel, and really the first time there was a singular vision for that parcel. And this parcel of land at the corner of Emmett Street and Ivy Road provides an unprecedented opportunity to enhance our community and encourage cross disciplinary engagement. When we began actively planning this parcel over five years ago, there were those who thought of it really as the opportunity to provide an entry or gateway to the university. While the intersection is indeed important, we saw this parcel more as having the ability to provide connectivity between central and north grounds. While the rotunda and the lawn will always be the heart and soul of the university, this parcel is located in the geographic center of most of the academic activity on grounds, as shown on this slide. But what was lacking was not only an identity and vibrancy to the area, but basic ways of traversing the land with the railroad tracks, lack of sidewalks, and lots of surface parking, making it inhospitable to pedestrians and bicyclists. So in this diagram, the blue lines represent pedestrian connectivity, the orange bicycle routes. And so it's clear to see that this area, along with the athletics district, which is just north of the railroad tracks, is really the hole in the doughnut without any connecting paths through it. So from this diagram, you can see that the framework plan we developed proposed a rational network of roads and pathways, reduced the curb cuts along Ivy Road from 11 to 3, making the pedestrian sidewalk much safer, and proposed ways to cross the formerly impenetrable athletics area, which led to the subsequent development of the athletics master plan and proposed the possibility of future bridges over the railroad tracks. We were focused on improving the public realm. So instead of narrow sidewalks interrupted by utility poles and directly adjacent to lanes of traffic, we proposed wider sidewalks created from traffic front by a tree lawn. We are working with the city to incorporate their standards for wider drive lanes, dedicated turn lanes, and clear bicycle lanes on both sides of Ivy Road. We looked at separating the bicycle lanes even more, but existing utilities in the roadway made that infeasible. We're also proposing terracing the steep incline at the International Residential College, as you can see on the right, to eliminate the existing tall retaining wall and allowing the sidewalk to widen on the south side of Ivy Road as well. So this was the site when we began the study. We knew that there were at least two amenities on the site, including the daylighted stream and the existing parking garage. This meant that we would not need to increase the parking capacity in this area to accommodate the new program. In fact, there will be fewer parking spaces overall with the change in use from current retail with their asphalt parking lots to a more academic focus on the site. After living with the open corner for two years now, it's a little difficult to remember what imposing presence the Cavalier Inn once was. When we began the study in 2016, we first imagined what an open corner might look like and how the open green corner seen here with Cars Hill Field, Nameless Field, and the International Residential College across the street would provide that civic space denoting an approach to the rotunda, which you can see in the distance. Okay, I understand that a few trees have been artfully removed to enable this view. But if you think nothing gets done in a timely manner around here, after much consideration of the significant capital investment it would take to upgrade the hotel, two years ago, the Cavalier Inn was demolished. And in the spring, with all the trees in bloom, you can see the north side of Alderman Library. When the new addition is complete, there will be great views from each of the sites. And the other factor in our planning for this development was the fact that the city of Charlottesville was successful in receiving a smart scale ground from the state to improve the streetscape along Emmett Street for pedestrians and bicyclists. There was opportunity for great collaboration and maximizing of investment. So that instead of this pedestrian and bicycle experience along Emmett Street, there would be this experience with dedicated bike lanes, planted tree lawns, and a wide multimodal path. The Framer Plan that was approved in 2016 proposed relocating the daylighted stream to the center of the parcel, enabling city block sized parcels to face both the street and the interior green and screen the existing parking garage. As we further develop the Framer Plan engaging in significant hydrological study, we recognize that there's a lot of water on the site and would need to modify the open green we had previously shown. Working with the city, we developed a pond on the corner to provide stormwater storage, working in much the way the Dell works, which would prevent the future flooding of Emmett Street, which likely happens during major storm events, as you may know. So it's important to remember that this intersection is at one of the lowest grade elevations on grounds. If you think of the lawn and the academical village being high and dry, this parcel and green is definitely low and wet. So this slide describes some of the topographic and hydrological context we are working with. The deeper purple color shows the lower elevation and how the stream and stormwater management is part of a larger system that includes the Dell and the wetlands around the JPJ arena. To be more sustainable, we wanted to minimize our reliance on engineering underground water management. Some of the older existing pipes are shown in this diagram in bright orange. So when President Ryan arrived, he formed the Emmett Ivy Task Force, whose report, by the way, can be found on our office's website, which looked at the programmatic needs for the site, essentially what should go there, and proposed some overarching goals of activity and inclusivity. The task force also stipulated the three nexuses of creativity and experimental arts, democracy, and discovery, and how they may be arrayed on the site. And that's what you can see in this diagram. The yellow on this diagram is meant to identify all the shared public space, not only in the open green, but within each building. You'll also note that the site on the southwest side of the garage is all yellow. The task force endorsed the recommendation for a new university hotel and conference center as being a program that would serve the broader university and local community. And so the first two sites that will be developed will be fronting the corner green for the new School of Data Science and towards the center of the parcel for the new UVA Hotel and Conference Center. You may also be aware that the university just received a substantial gift to develop a new Democracy Institute, which will likely be located adjacent to the hotel at the western edge of the lower green. So this slide shows the key components of the initial development, including the civic scaled landscape, pond, and a wide pedestrian promenade. And as I mentioned, the new School of Data Science located adjacent to the pond on the corner and the new university hotel and conference center adjacent to the existing parking garage. Over time, we hope to build out the remaining parcels on the site, perhaps in phases as shown here, and the potential full build out of the site as shown in this plan. So a high priority for the university in the development of the site is ensuring active pedestrian and community activity. This sort of X-ray diagram of the site shows how we've located the public facing program of the proposed buildings to be adjacent to the exterior civic spaces of the amphitheater around the pond, the connecting 20 foot wide pedestrian promenade on the north side of the site, and the hotel's arrival court off of Ivy Road. And this is more of a fully clothed view that shows the School of Data Science in the foreground, adjacent to the pond and amphitheater, as well as the future hotel and conference center in the background. So from this view, approaching the site from across Ivy Road, the building is seen as a three story brick mass, which acknowledges the angle of Ivy Road. The fourth floor engages with a civic scaled portico, which will provide an appropriately scaled facade for the district. There's a continuous terrace at the fourth floor along the east facade underneath the Breeze Soleil, which will provide great views overlooking the pond, as well as fantastic views back towards the rotunda and the new library addition. This exterior space will really be a great resource for the school to host events. So the building at 60,000 square feet is not large in size, but it really needs to have a presence on this first site of the parcel. So the brick proposed for the building and the district in general will match the brick used on central grounds, and the ground floor will have a great deal of transparency to allow the activity of the building to activate the exterior public space. The interior of the building will be open and welcoming, as seen in this view. This is the school's hub, as we've called it, with its double height space to host lectures and other events. The space will allow the life and activity of the School of Data Science to be on full display. And in this view, from the corner of Emmett Street, you can see the design for many of the exterior public spaces, such as the amphitheater around the pond, one of the porches in the landscape on the right to allow for casual gathering, the plaza in front of the School of Data Science, and the transparency of the two story hub that you just saw. All of which we really hope will contribute to enable this building to be a beacon at the entry to this new district. So now that I've discussed the landscape and the design for the School of Data Science, this slide shows the proposed site for the hotel and conference center. It's centrally located not only on the Emmett Ivy Corridor parcel, but geographically, it is centrally located between central and north grounds and adjacent to the athletics district. It will also screen the southwestern portion of the existing parking garage, which is fulfilling one of our original goals. So it's interesting to note that there's also a roughly 40 foot change in grade elevation between the Emmett Ivy intersection and Copley Road, rises towards the west, as you may know, which really helped in the design of the hotel, which I'll show you in the next few slides. So this diagrammatic section of the building looking north shows how the height of the hotel is mitigated by the 20 foot change in grade between the upper and lower sections of the site. It also shows the relationship of the hotel's public facing program of the cafe, the visitor's center, and what we call the living room to the pedestrian promenade. There'll be a public restaurant on the main level off of Ivy Road, and the main conference facilities will be located on the third floor overlooking the green with the hotel rooms above that. So on the far right, you can see two stacked white boxes, white terraces, which will allow for great exterior space overlooking the green adjacent to the restaurant on the second floor and the conference facilities on the third floor. This image shows the main hotel arrival from Ivy Road with its port to share protecting cars and pedestrians from the weather. The hotel will have 215 rooms and approximately 28,000 square feet of conference facilities, making it, I believe, the largest in the region. So we're also hoping to have a rooftop venue. These photos are from a precedent hotel showing how equally fantastic the views will be from our site. And this is a slightly different view of the main hotel arrival, showing the relationship of the building to the adjacent future development on the left, likely the site for the Democracy Institute. So from here, you can also see the relationship of the exterior promenade stair to the interior lobby and stair of the hotel. This view looking west shows the relationship of the living room on the right. That's the, the, the more casual gathering space in the hotel on the right to the very pedestrian nature of the promenade. The porch overlooking the stream on the left is located adjacent to the hotels, the hotel cafe, sorry, the hotel's cafe grab and go, and will be an area for outdoor furniture to encourage gathering. And this is a view of the entry to the hotel at the cafe level and the restaurant's outdoor terrace above the cafe looking west. This entry will provide direct access to the visitor's center and will be visible from the entry to the parking garage. So you all know, as I do, that our landscape on grounds is magnificent, and our goal in the design of this district is to make sure that it too will look beautiful in all seasons. So as a result, our planting palette is pretty robust with specific focus on seasonal plantings for late spring to make sure we have beautiful color for graduation, palette for late summer when the students will be returning to grounds, late fall for the holidays, and it will even look beautiful during the occasional Charlottesville snow. Spoken like a true Northerner, sorry. So if you're interested in the timing of all this work, these next few slides break out the anticipated schedule of the major components, the first being the construction of the public realm, as shown in the red outline, the first steps of which have begun. The city's smart scale project is anticipated to begin mid to late 2022. Our School of Data Science is anticipated to begin to break ground this fall and be open for classes in the spring of 2024. And the hotel and conference center is anticipated to break ground this coming winter and be open to the public in the summer of 2024. And finally, the planting of the stream corridor and the pond will begin approximately in the fall of 2023 and will continue as the construction schedules of the School of Data Science and the hotel and conference center allow. And finally, one last view, looking over, looking west over the site. We're really excited to see how the district develops over the years, and, and our hope is that it becomes an important place for the university and the broader community. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so very much. If you will, if we can unshare you so that I can see our colleagues. And while you're doing that, Alice, ask you, is this, do you have a sense, would you, would you say that what your, what your plan and your vision for the, for the Ivy Road and Emmett Street area sort of connects into the contemplative commons that's going to be up at the Dell so that you're doing, so that in fact, you're actually recreating or reimagining an area there by moving the basketball courts into a, actually a more public space? I know that that is a, actually more central public space and how those, how that's, how that, uh, that landmass might hang together for you, for us?
Well, you know, so it's a really good question because I think our focus has always been to make, you know, the streets, which are, you know, city streets or county streets more walkable and bikeable and, you know, for, for pedestrians to be able to use, you know, them with a little more comfort and our reliance on public transportation. So that's been the focus for, you know, for the contemplative commons as well, just south of Emmett Street. You know, we are, you know, building on a parking lot that, you know, was, you know, a beautiful Dell, but, you know, waiting for the other half of that landscape. And so, you know, the building that's going to be there is really going to enhance Emmett Street and really form a much more civic, you know, streetscape. And that is the same details in terms of the streetscape we're using for Ivy Road and Emmett Street, you know, the, the bike lanes, you know, the sidewalks, et cetera. The contemplative commons, which will also replace a current bridge that currently crosses to, you know, Ridley Hall and to, you know, to Ruffner and Ridley, sorry, Bavaro and Ridley, and it's inaccessible at the moment. It has two very steep, you know, runs of stair at either end. So the, our idea is then to make a ramp that comes down from New Call and allows the new crossing to be accessible and will continue all the way over to McCormick Road and the, the old dorms. So there is a, I would say, Julian, in answer to your question, there's a overall attitude about being much more civic minded and making much more comfortable and commodious streetscapes between, between the projects.
Thank you for that. And so I will now turn to my colleagues and see if they've got questions or comments for, for the university architect. Rick?
Ms. Roucher, I'd like to compliment you and the university. You're one of the few projects that I've seen in nine years where there is a multimodal path proposed and dedicated bike lanes simultaneously. Oftentimes developers want to present the multimodal paths as being a catchall for bike lanes, people walking, women and men out there with strollers, with dogs and children in them. And I think it's terrific that the university has gone ahead and it identified the need for both. So I want to compliment you and I appreciate you coming to us and, and providing all this information this evening. So thank you for that as well.
Well, thank you, Mr. Randolph. I'll have to give credit where credit is due, though, that, that really is the city's collaboration with us. You know, they really, they really prefer the idea of a multimodal path and commuter bike lanes. And so that is, I have to say, it's taking a fair amount of real estate, but we appreciate, you know, the need for it. But I do want to share that, that credit with our colleagues at the city for that, for that detail. I also, welcome, you know, thank you for inviting me to do this. I feel to, you know, that we have been, I mean, I'm hoping that we've been open and sharing with about this scheme as it has developed over the years. I've made multiple presentations at PAC and LUPAC now, and also I'm hoping that, you know, that we do have an open line of communication, you know, with our, with our neighbors. But thank you for that.
Others? Tim?
Good evening. Thank you very much for this presentation. And thank you to you and your colleagues in the university for showing us that it is possible to work with the topography and the hydrology of this area. It has been so frustrating to many of us on this body to see project after project that takes away from the beautiful Piedmont of Virginia with the flattening of sites and the lack of creative thought and use and stepping down and taking advantage of the underlying and above surface hydrology. So thank you very much. I hope this becomes a, a model that we can point to for other projects that we see in the future.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that. And if, I don't know if any of you have seen the Brandon Avenue development, but that has been, you know, our central green, which is a working landscape, you know, it, you know, is a stormwater catchment area as well, I think has been very successful. It's very beautiful and it also, you know, has an attitude about district wide stormwater management. And we have to deal with the topography there as well. We have challenges here in Charlottesville, as we all know. But thank you.
Do I, do I see anyone else who would like to, Corey?
Good afternoon, Madam Roucher. Such a pleasure and a treat to have you here. And what a great project that you presented. And I was just curious if you could speak a little bit about like the site lighting scheme as you illuminate that corner and move throughout. It'd be awesome to hear about that.
That's a good question, too. So, you know, we do have the commitment to, you know, night sky, you know, we've been working with the city on their regulations. We have, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know if they're full cutoff. Is that what, is that what you're referring to in particular?
Well, more so just a scheme, you know, areas. Or more so just a scheme, you know, areas that, that, as you know, as you move pedestrians through and so forth tonight.
I see. Well, I have to say that those details are still being developed, you know, with our team. But the attitude is that, you know, there's one realm, which is the public realm, which blends seamlessly into grounds and the city so that we have, you know, similar levels of light for safety around the edge. And then there's, you know, a slightly different scheme in terms of not only street lamps, which will be a little more modern, you know, pedestrian streetlights on the interior of the project and then a series of bollards and lights over the bridge to make sure that, you know, we have code requirements, obviously, but that also, you know, we are sensitive to you know, dark sky issues, you know, around the site. I think the great thing about this is that, you know, it's true that they, it'll be a hotel that's screening the garage, but it's gonna be much more pleasant to see, you know, the soft lighting of hotel rooms with shit, with curtains on them and the lights of the garage that are currently, you know, kind of bright. And, you know, there will be still a robust landscape with trees in the, you know, central green, as well as the fact that it'll be, you know, planted for a wetland area. So I think it'll be a very, you know, soft lighting, but those develop, those actual details are still being developed.
Thank you. You've answered the question. I really enjoyed that nighttime rendering of the, I think it was the Science Center.
Yes.
Answered that question. So thank you.
Yep. I mean, I think the idea for the amphitheater in particular is gonna be quite lovely because it's gonna be much softer lighting, you know, around the amphitheater that's meant to be an open public space. I think that will be really well used and all of these, you know, this, this framework plan was being developed before, you know, this, our past pandemic, you know, I say in the past, I'm hoping it will be passed. But, you know, the need for exterior spaces has never been, you know, seen as more important than this past year. So I think, you know, this, this whole district will be very well used. Thank you.
Are there others before we let the university architect continue her, her evening? I, I keep expecting Karen, who is our, to come forward, but I see she's, I see her name, but I don't see her. Oh, she just went off mute. And Karen, Karen?
I'm here.
You're here? Okay.
I'm here. Now, I have that, the internet, the internet is bad tonight, but also I have a potential or perceived conflict of interest as a university employee.
Okay, a question's a question now. We're allowed to ask questions. And we're not voting on anything. We're just asking questions. So if you have a question, that's okay. But appreciate that. Daniel, did you have?
No.
It looks like a great project. And as a data scientist, I'm excited to see the School of Data Science.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you'd have something to say about that. That's the one thing I thought you might have something to say about that, Dan.
It's gonna be very cool, I have to say. If that's been the challenge, you know, we've been working Hopkins, you know, V M D O is a local architect, as we know, but Hopkins is from Great Britain. So we've pretty much designed this entire, you know, project via Zoom, which has had its challenges. But it can be done.
Well, seeing that none of our, seeing that none of my colleagues have, have their hands up. Alice, thank you so very much for being here. Thank you also. Many, many of us may not realize that during Alice's tenure, or during this university architect's tenure, she will have had a hand in reshaping, I will say, more of our, of the university community than any other, than any other architects since Thomas Jefferson. And that is a, that is, that is a major, that's a major accomplishment. And I think it will point to sort of what we will have before, as, as, as we go into the future and as our colleagues said, that I think that this is the, the, the standards and the, and the, the thinking that's going on in this program will allow us perhaps to point, point some of our applications to, to a different, to, to a different way of thinking and stuff. Thank you so very much for that and I look forward to seeing you. And I think we can hit the, we can have Luis up to show us the Brandon Avenue. Did he, did he, if I remember right, did he have a hand in the Brandon Avenue?
He didn't, but if you'd like, I'll be happy to come back and do that another time.
Thank you. So we'll, we'll talk to him about that. So we'll ask Charles and Luis to talk about inviting you back to show us Brandon Avenue.
Wonderful. Thank you. And thank you for your very kind words and for your time this evening.
Have a good evening.
You too. Take care.
Okay. Moving on to our public hearing tonight, which is for ZMA 2021 0004 Breezy Hill. If we could, if we could begin to have the, the staff report on that place. But before that, is, is our council here?
And Mr. Chair.
So I'm gonna ask just, just for, just to sort of bring everyone to, to a space, I'm gonna ask our council just to give us a tiny bit of administrative background and sort of some scope of what we've done to get to this place. Because I know we've got, we've been there, we've gone away, we've been back. And I, I thought it would be helpful if he, if, if I could ask Mr. Herrick to just do that. So if you would, sir, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, happy to do so. There've been a number of questions that have arisen over this application. So I wanted to address a, a number of the questions that seem to have come up. The first of which is, why is the planning commission considering this application? Isn't this an application that the planning commission has heard before? And actually, as, as the commission may be aware, this is actually a new application, even though, and this applicant has filed previous applications, this isn't new application. The applicant has, has filed an application as a title to a public hearing on its new application. We've also received a number of questions regarding the role of the master plan. And the master plan, as the chair may be aware, is not a contract or agreement, but it's a guide to orderly development. It's helpful, it's informative, and it should be given the appropriate weight, but it's not necessarily determinative of either the planning commission's recommendation or the board's decision. We've also had questions about a potential moratoriums on development on, and questions about traffic impacts. And under Virginia law, a local governing body does not have the authority to enact an ordinance establishing a moratorium on all zoning changes in a portion of a locality until highway improvements can be made. However, both current and projected traffic can be a consideration in individual applications. And if traffic impacts do become a determining factor, it would be better to focus on residents' statements of the current state of the road infrastructure, whether recommending approval or denial, rather than on the six transportation improvements listed in the master plan. So I just wanted to add some clarity to, to those issues and a lot of the questions that we received. I'm happy to answer any questions that either you or the commission might have at this time or maybe later in the evening.
Well, I asked, thank you so very much. And while I ask that, we sort of just, I know you'll be there, but if you'll be, be ready to sort of jump in if we have questions coming along.
Absolutely.
Thank you so very much. Madam, Corey, before we go.
Yeah, I do have a question for council. If a proposal doesn't meet a county policy, is that allowed?
Can I, Corey, can I ask if we can just hold that until we're in our deliberations?
Sure.
If you, if you just note that, let's hold that for deliberations.
Sure, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. May we have the staff report on ZMA 2021 0004 Breezy Hill? And welcome to, welcome. It's good to see you again this week.
Yes. You'll give me one second. Okay. Good evening. I'm Megan Adosso, Development Process Manager with Community Development Department. And tonight, we are here for the first public hearing on a request to rezone five parcels that together are approximately 75.6 acres located along Route 250 East in the Village of Ivana Master Plan area. ZMA 2021 004 Breezy Hill. So as I said, this proposal is a request rezoned from RA zoning to R1 residential. A brief overview of my presentation, I will present the site context, the current zoning, the master plan's future land use designation, including recommendations on transportation improvements, overview of the proposed rezoning and plan, and then I will give a brief overview of the applicant's offer proffered factors favorable and unfavorable, and conclude with the recommendation on the rezoning. This is a vicinity map on the screen and I'm just gonna orient everyone. Route 250 is here in the middle of the screen. To the upper left is Cynthia Charlottesville, Ravanna Village, Village Center, Glenmore is here, the site is in the center and the Gold Star and Running Deer neighborhood. There are currently some single-family houses on the property, two that are off of Breezy Hill Main and one that is accessed off of Route 250. There's also a structure in the very back of the property that is a farm building access off of Hearns Lane, which connects back to Running Deer. So the zoning of the property is currently RA and this is a map showing the various zoning in the area. The village, Ravanna Village centers zone neighborhood model. Glenmore is zone plan residential development. This als, this map also shows the environmental features such as the floodplain, which is the blue striped area on the map, the stream buffer, which is the purple, purplish pink color, and the preserve slopes, which are this lime green color. And so all of the parcels that are white on the map are zoned rural areas. Now, the development area boundary is along Running Deer Drive and you'll see that more closely on the next slide. So here is the Village of Ivana Master Plan overlaid onto the GIS and you can see the dividing line. This is the rural areas and the development areas. And Breezy Hill is within the Village of Ivana Master Plan. The future land use plan includes two designations for the property, the neighborhood density residential low, which is the lighter yellow color on the map. The parks and green systems along Carroll Creek Road, it's kind of hard to see, but it's, it's underneath because it captures also the floodplain and stream buffer. And also there's green systems along US 250. To the west and on, across Carroll Creek, the land use designation is neighborhood density. So this exhibits the transition that is discussed within the master plan to provide the most intensive and denser development within the village center, which Ravanna Village, it's off of this map out here to the least dense adjacent to the edge of the master plan and Running Deer Drive. So this is a, a screen capture of the land use plan with, within the Village of Ivana Master Plan. And the parcels aren't shown on this map. How I orient you, this is the area where Breezy Hill is located. This is Hearns Lane and Running Deer Drive and 250 is that a British orange line? So the land use plan within the master plan also shows this connection to the west over Carroll Creek from a connection into Route 250 and a connection to Running Deer Drive. It also recommends a multi-use path to the south side of 250, which the, this is the section that is within the master plan showing that multi-use path. The proposed plan is providing the future connection across Carroll Creek, the full access connection to 250, the connection to Running Deer Drive and the multi-use trail along 250. And you'll see that later on when I get to. So the master plan further designates this area, it's Area B with a density recommendation of one dwelling unit per acre. This on the screen is from the master plan. This chart describes three areas where future development could be expected within the Village of Ivana. It provides guidance on how this area would transition from higher density to lower density, radiating out from Glenmore and Ravanna Village. And so Breezy Hill is within Area B that is described as having the lowest density of the development area. And this is in enlargement of that Area B, and I've outlined Breezy Hill and how that overlays on top of Area B. There, with the five parcels that are being requested to be rezoned, there are 11 additional parcels within Area B in the master plan and outside of Breezy Hill. And you can see those are lighter parcels in these three areas. As detailed in my staff report, the recommended density for the proposal is using, that staff is using, is using the calculation to not include the environmental features and areas designated as parks and green systems, which is outlined in Strategy 8C of the Development Areas Chapter in the Comprehensive Plan. And we commonly refer to this as net density. And that density is actually not a term used in the Comprehensive Plan, but that's the term that we've commonly used to describe that calculation. And staff has identified that it would be 58 to 59 units at one unit per acre for, for these five parcels. In addition to the land use recommendations within the Village of Ivana Master Plan, there are a number of recommended transportation improvements. The master plan also states that approval of any development by rezoning will be predicated on the completion of a number of transportation improvements. And that is essential that all of 250 improvements be constructed before new development occurs in the village. This chart is a summary of the transportation recommendations in the master plan and the status as provided by Kevin McDermott, the County Planning Manager overseeing transportation that was included in the staff report. And I'm not gonna go through all of these. If you want to return back to them, we, we can do so. And so on to the proposed application. This is Sheet 3 from the concept plan document and it's an attachment for the staff report. And to reorient everyone, this is 250. It's the same orientation that we had before. Running Deer Drive is located here. The proposal is for 80 residential units, single-family detached residential units from RA to R1. All, the proposed proposal includes 22 acres of green space that will include the environmental features of the preserve slopes, floodplain and the stream buffer. You can see those in this lighter green area. And the green space will also include trails and a pocket park. The main entrance is off of Route 250. And there is a multi-use path also proposed as recommended by the comp plan that I mentioned before. All the streets will have curb, gutter, sidewalks and street trees. This is Sheet 4 of the Concept Plan Document, which is an illustrative layout plan. And since this, this is a rezoning to conventional development, R1 and not a planned district, the applicant has offered the plan to be proffered with nine major elements identified, which include maximum of 80 units, primary vehicular connection at 250, the secondary access provided at Running Deer prior to the, the 31st building permit, that construction traffic be restricted from using Running Deer, the reservation for future connection toward Carroll Creek, the typical road sections that were included in the packet, and the trails, multi-use paths and pedestrian networks, the locations and sizes of open space stream buffer and conservation areas, and that lots may encroach into the stream buffers preserve, may not encroach, excuse me, into the stream buffers preserve slopes or any proposed slopes of 25% or greater. And I have a slide. If you want to look at those elements, I can pull up a slide just for that. The factors favorable to this request include that the proposed development includes an entrance as recommended on the future land use plan. The proposal includes a multi-use path along 250. The proposal includes future vehicular and/or pedestrian interparcel connection to the west across Carroll Creek as recommended in the future land use plan, and the proposal meets the intent and purposes of the R1 zoning district. And the proposal meets the intent and purposes of the R one zoning district. Unfavorable in factors include the proposed density exceeding the recommendations in the master plan. The proposal does not address the transportation improvements identified in the master plan as being a prerequisite to new development through rezoning. The applicants have not clearly demonstrated that impacts of the development and transportation facilities and schools has been mitigated. The proposal is not meeting the existing affordable housing policy. And the proposal does not meet a number of the applicable neighborhood model principles. And I recognize I didn't go through every single one of these in my presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions, they were outlined in detail, I think in my my report. So based upon unfavorable factors, staff is recommending denial of the rezoning request. And that concludes my part of the presentation, Adam Moore from the Virginia Department of Transportation is here with me this evening as well, if there's questions. For him.
If you will, thank you, thank you very much. Are there questions for Megan before we go to the applicant? Or I guess also for Adam before we go to the applicant. Okay. Saying none, then good evening, Mr. Armstrong, you're next and as you know. You know the drill, you know how long you have and welcome this evening and returning floor over you at this point.
Okay, good evening. This evening we're presenting a much lower density version of Breezy Hill. This one with half the density of previous version. I'm Charlie Armstrong, I'm with Southern Development. Also on the call is Don Franco, land planner and engineer with Route Scale Associates. You saw two previous iterations of this last year. Quick recap, the first time we presented it to you, we proposed one hundred and sixty homes. Or roughly two dwellings per acre in an R four zoning district. The second time we reduced the density to a hundred and thirty homes or one point six dwellings per acre, still proposing an R four district. This time we've reduced the density by another fifty homes down to one dwelling per acre. And this time we're requesting an R one zoning district, not R four. The major objections to developing this parcel have been density, traffic. And the road connection to running deer drive has been a sticking point with neighbors as well. It's very clear that Glenmore residents are opposed to anything that generates additional traffic on route two fifty. That is acknowledged, but major improvements to route two fifty and I sixty four under construction as we speak. And both VDOT and the county traffic planner have determined. And stated in your staff report that the traffic impacts from this revised lower density proposal would be minimal. We also understand that some residents of Running Deer don't want a road connection to Running Deer Drive. We initially proposed that connection as an emergency access only. But both VDOT and Almaral requiring that road connection. It's shown on the Village of Ravana master plan that Megan just showed you. And our connection point is exactly where it's shown on that master plan. So we're, we're doing that as a full road connection because that's what would be required here and what was intended in the master plan. In this revision, we've pulled homes even further away from running gear drives in the last couple of iterations. Our closest new homes would be more than three hundred feet from running your drive with woods in between. Only required road connection touches running gear. Regarding density, we've changed our request from R four. To R one and R one is the lowest density conventional zoning district that Almo has. We've offered a density cap in the proffers so that bonus density cannot be requested. And we are at one dwelling per acre. And unfortunately, such low density precludes the financial feasibility. Of some things like proffered affordable housing, higher density is the best path toward that goal. And we've had to choose low density over the financial benefits that higher density can confer on those other goals. We don't like that decision. But it is what is feasible when we're left with with the density we're talking about here, which is what. Adjacent neighbors have strongly demanded. Breezy Hills within Almaral's designated growth area, you know that. This is where we want our development to occur at only one dwelling per acre, I have some serious hesitations. That this proposal is under utilizing our designated growth areas. And that's to the eventual detriment of our rural areas. That's my opinion. But this commission has said before that it thinks two dwellings per acre or even one point six dwellings per acre is too much for this particular site. So we are back with this R one proposal. If I can share my screen briefly here. Megan showed you this. It's a detailed area B of the Village of Ravana master plan. There are several places in the master plan indicating that up to two dwellings per acre desired in area B. There is one place in the master plan indicating that the density in area should be one dwelling per acre, and that is what is on your screen now. Nowhere in the master plan mentions less than one dwelling per acre. So the entirety of area B is highlighted here and Megan did an even better highlighting job than this does because she overlaid Breezy Hill in it. But area B that's highlighted here includes the sensitive environmental areas that we're preserving and it is a total of one hundred and fifteen acres. Gross gross area, the master plan future land use map says one hundred and fifteen dwellings. In one hundred and fifteen acres. That's highlighted there, that is one unit per acre. Gross, not net, it's a very clear description of what is expected in area B. We are eighty of those proposed here in a portion of area B. In this revised application, we are, we're down to that one dwelling. Though we philosophically. Disagree that portions of Almaral's development areas should be developed at such low densities. We're attempting to comply with what we've heard loudly from from others and from you. And respect that, and so we have come back to this lower density proposal. It's R one and that is what is for you tonight, so thank you very much for your time. I'm here for questions at any point. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you very much, other questions for the applicant? Corey.
Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Armstrong, just curious if you could share, what is that sweet spot in terms of density? And the ability for war to provide affordable housing units, what is that sweet spot? I feel like the last time we saw it. The pendulum and I was on this end of pendulum, is there anywhere in the middle, just out of curiosity?
We. I guess there's a general answer and a more specific answer to your question. The general answer is. Generally, the higher the density on a piece of land, the more. Community benefits can be financed through the revenues from that development. That's a very general statement, it's not so true because land costs and other things like that can can very much complicate that picture. In this particular instance, we found a sweet spot at one hundred and thirty units of density. Where we thought the impacts on the surrounding area were were fairly minimal. And could be mitigated through, you know, things like an affordable housing proffer could be financed with a hundred and thirty units of density. But the community was really focused on on density as a as a primary. Concern for this particular property. And and it was very clear in your meeting and other conversations we're having that the community still thought that one thirty was too many. And that one, you know, per acre was the absolute max that. That they would be interested in, so. That I think was the sweet spot here, or at least the lowest spot where we could make it work.
Okay, Corey.
And this one final question, thank you for that answer. Is there a vision to develop those remaining parcels, that's one plot B?
We don't own the parcels behind Breezy Hill, which are in in area B, that's off of Hearns Lane. I don't know the exact acreage of that, but it's probably. Twenty five or or thirty acres. So we have no intentions on that, there are some other parcels that are on the northwest side of area B. That we also don't own similar situation. And then we own two parcels that we had proposed as part of this project on the east side of area B. They were in a previous application to be developed, we do not propose to reason them here. Those remain rural area zoning. And I believe right now it's two lots, one has a house on it already. That is occupied, so the other lot could conceivably be built on at some point, but. But we don't plan to upzone that at any time. We would at most. Sell the existing house or or build one house on on existing rural land, whatever's allowed there now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Corey, you good, the moment, okay, anyone else before we, from Mr. Armstrong? Thank you, Mr. Armstrong, so we'll, we'll come back, but I'll just before we go to it, so am I understanding that there will not be any connection on the Hearns Lane?
That's right, we're not proposing one.
Okay, I just wanted to clear it up, okay, so hearing no other comments for him and you know you'll have a chance to sort of. Just to wind things up when we come back, but I'm going to open it for for public hearing and go forward from there. Madam, would you, would you call, would you invite people to speak as you do?
Yes, at this time I have one person pre-signed up, that's Neil Means, I'm going to unmute him and give him. The opportunities, speak if there's anyone else that would like to speak on this matter, please raise your hand so you can get in the queue. If you're lined up to go in the order that your hand is raised. Mr. Means, if you please state your name and address, if you're representing a group or organization. State that as well and your time starts as soon as you start speaking, you have three minutes.
Neil Means and my address is Keswick, Virginia, I live in the Village of Ravanna. I've been a resident of Village of Ravanna since before it was a village. I've been involved in the planning process since the beginning, including the creation of the master plan. And I served on the community advisory committee for a number of years and I'm currently a member again. I urge you to recommend denial of Breezy Hill, it does not conform to the master plan. In nineteen eighty nine, Albemarle County created the Village of Ravanna Altman area over the objections of local residents. One of our major concerns was traffic. The county proposed. County promised us adequate roads to Charlottesville. Providing transportation infrastructure was one of the original justifications for the whole strategy of steering growth into development areas. The definition of a village in the comprehensive plan includes. Roads with adequate capacity between the village and the urban core. It says employment centers are not anticipated in the village. And villages are not expected to operate independently. The Village of Ravanna is totally dependent on route two fifty. The county approved all the development in the village, that is Glenmore, its expansions and Ravanna Village. While not permitting us to do a master plan. And while promising us adequate roads. Then finally, they did do the master planning during which they showed us the East Albemarle SubArea Study by VDOT and Albemarle County. Based on two thousand and five data. Which shows route two fifty was of capacity before Ravanna Village and Glenmore's expansions were approved. That study by VDOT and the county. Recommends widening route two fifty to four lanes between the village and the I sixty four shadwell interchange. In order to provide adequate roads. So that requirement was included in the master plan. The planning commission and the board of supervisors unanimously passed it, once again promising the adequate roads already. In the comprehensive plan and the development area policy. Breezy Hill, Breezy Hill is the first development application under the master plan. It does not meet the master plan criteria. If the county approves it, it will be saying to its citizens that the master planning process is sham. The comprehensive plan is a sham and the development area policy is a failure. Please recommend denial of Breezy Hill, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Means. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to speak, please raise your hand? We will give it another minute, if there's anybody that would like to speak, please raise your hand now. All right, Mr. Chairman, now one has their hand rings.
Thank you, madam, so we're closing the public hearing and Mr. Armstrong, if you'd like to come back to us. And if there's, if you'd like to wind, sort of give us a bit of bit more information, if not, we appreciate it and then we'll take the deliberations to ourselves.
I will address one thing Mr. Means said very briefly, and he's absolutely correct that the master plan lists. Four laning of two fifty from Glenmore to. I sixty four, which is about three miles. As a major priority. I don't think I have to. Say that that is not something that that we can do. That is a major, major regional VDOT project if it ever comes to pass. And VDOT has no plans for that and the county has no plans for that. So if that is a primary reason that. New development in this development area should be denied, then that is essentially a moratorium. On any rezonings in this growth area, I don't accept that premise, I think the master plan is a bigger. Document with many more facets than that one, but. But that's my only comment on that, thank you again.
Thank you so much for being, so we will turn it on to ourselves. Corey, you had a, you had a question for council, so if you please, if you would. Feel feel comfortable bringing that forward now, I appreciate it.
Sure, I guess Mr. Counsel is just helping me understand. The role of policy and is it voluntary versus you must comply, if you just talk to me a little bit about that. Particularly in regards to this proposal on the affordable housing aspect.
So your your concern, Mr. Claiborne, is that the proposal doesn't meet the affordable housing policy of the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that that policy would be again a factor unfavorable rather than necessarily determinative. So it would be something that the commission would take into account as it as it weighs the pros and cons of this application. But it's not necessarily something that would require disapproval on the part of the commission.
Okay, so policies don't have to necessarily be followed then, correct?
Well, the policy doesn't necessarily have the force of county ordinance or state law is what I'm saying.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, so Rick, please, I see, I see Rick and who else, so we line up, so Rick, Karen. And. So we'll go Rick, Karen and Dan.
I want to start off by. Just correcting some statements that have been made this evening, first. All members of the planning commission have received communications from residents, not only from Glenmore. But also from Breezy Hill and for the previous application. With a hundred and thirty units and the application before that, a hundred and sixty units. Received communications from residents outside of the Village of Ravanna, residents of Keswick. In general. And therefore it is not an accurate statement. That Glenmore residents oppose this application solely because of traffic. Just today you received, members of the planning commission, all of us received. A communication from the former president of the Glenmore Community Association. Deborah Conway indicating her concern about the school impacts of this project. And numerous letters. And numerous letters have come in expressing concern as Neil Means eloquently stated and accurately, historically accurately presented, the concern about the master plan. Now, the second point I want to make is in nine and a half years of service in this county, I keep hearing the remark of Chicken Little, "The sky is falling, the sky is falling." And by with that, I mean what's happening is there's going to be a sudden rush of houses being constructed in the rural area if we don't just pack everybody in like sardines in the development area, master plans notwithstanding. Because if we don't do that, there's going to be substantial pressure in the rural area. I submit Exhibit A of just this quarter's building permits. A hundred and eighty-three building permits were issued for two hundred and twenty-two dwelling units. And eleven point five percent of them were actually in the rural area. Once again, the overwhelming preponderance of building permits in this county is following the outline of the comprehensive plan that's occurring in the development area. Breezy Hill, whether one approves this this evening or submits that it should be rejected because of several factors that I'll bring up, it's not going to change this equation. You can look at it historically, it comes in right around twelve to eight percent in terms of development in the rural area. So as Bill Clinton used to say, that dog don't hunt in terms of putting the flag up the flagpole and saying, if you don't approve this Planning Commission, it's going to mean that there's going to be more rural subdivision development. Now, I do want to talk a second about Area B. And in the master plan, which as Neil pointed out this evening, was really developed around two thousand and eight, which for government, that's almost like ancient history. I think the Romans were actually looking at that plan in two thousand and eight. And at that point, we hadn't really had an educated discussion as a community about the distinction between gross density and net density. But I can say this unequivocally, having served as a member of the Board of Supervisors with an application that arose out on two fifty west in the community of Adelaide. At that point, the board very clearly asked for clarification from the planning staff, because it was our understanding that we should take the overall number of acres for the, that were proposed for development and subtract from that the acreage that was either wetlands, that was steep slopes, and therefore come up with a net density. Now, if you apply net density here, you do the math. Let the numbers be determinative. Seventy-five point six acres minus twenty-two point one acres, which is going to be set asides for steep slopes or because of wetland. You come up there, you get there for fifty-three point five acres. And if you divide that into eighty, you don't come up with one point four, you come up with one point four nine five three. My fellow colleagues, this is an R one zoning, this is an R two zoning, this is R one point five zoning. Funny thing, I don't think we've ever had a discussion about R one point five zoning. So regardless of what the master plan had actually posited as one development unit per acre, the operating philosophy of the county over the course of at least the last four years, if not longer than that, has been that we operate with net density. Now, the statement was made, the county doesn't have plans for widening of two fifty. When I joined the board in our initial discussion about improvements on the two fifty corridor, that project lay at around project number sixty-three. And I'm happy to say, after there was an invitation extended to Kevin, and Kevin came out for a well-attended meeting at East Ravanna Volunteer Fire Company about four years ago. As a result of that, where he got better understanding of some of the nuances involved with the transportation challenges on the two fifty corridor. He then, I think, changed that project from about number sixty-three and it went down around project number thirty-two. Now, maybe that doesn't mean a lot to some people, but when I see an improvement of thirty places, then that indicates that the county does have plans down the line. And obviously, we have a lot of demand for road improvements in our community. But this project is not something that's off the county's radar, as a developer would like to have us believe. So based on this, I can't come to any other conclusion based on, once again, a STAF report that cites the whole series of negative factors. Had we seen now in this application one unit per acre based on net density and provision for public transit, as he once offered to provide transit to Pantops with public housing included? Because without transit, there's no reasonable basis to put public housing all the way on the eastern end of the county. But if there is transit offered and there is public housing, that would be workable. But I just do not see in this application at this time, a serious proposal consistent with the master plan that is worthy of our support. And thank you for indulging me as I went through all these points.
Karen, please.
Yes, I was, I just wanted to react to Commissioner Claiborne's comment about affordable housing. I had the same concern initially, but as I thought about it, the master plan calling for one acre per dwelling unit at this location shows me that clearly the county did not intend for this site to support affordable housing. And we can debate whether that was a good idea or not, but it seems like there's just, at that density, no one intended for that to happen there. I would say though, that I'm not sure and I may be misinterpreting this, but Commissioner Randolph's comments about Means, I'm not sure that even at a net density of one point four nine five three units per acre is overly dense either. And we have the same problem that we have had all along in traffic planning, which is that it's difficult to get projects to become a priority until we show that the road is significantly failing. And yes, the residents believe that this road is failing, that two fifty is failing at the traffic backups that are occurring there, and I'm sure I agree with that. But it's always a catch twenty-two, the way traffic planning is done in Virginia. So I don't know what it would take to get this road to actually be four-laned, except for adding more density along the corridor. So that probably was not helpful, but that's some of my reaction.
Yeah, I have kind of similar, I've heard a couple things tonight, and I'm trying to untangle some of the arguments of like, this is not consistent with, this, this project is not consistent with the Village of Ravanna master plan, it doesn't conform to the neighborhood model density plans. But at the same time, when I read the section on neighborhood model density from the zoning, it says that NMD is intended to provide for compact mixed-use development with an urban-scale massing density and infrastructure configuration that integrates diverse uses within close proximity to each other within the development areas identified in the comprehensive plan. So I'm left a little bit struggling to say, are we, you know, we're applying a concept to this development to be NMD. But yet we don't want, you know, we want affordable housing, we want all these things, but we don't want density, but we don't want density. So I feel like there's a, I'm struggling trying to understand how to evaluate it a little bit. I'm not, you know, and so let me, let me rephrase, that's, that's one concept of this. How we, is it consistent with the Village of Ravanna? The traffic and all that is a separate, you know, is related, but it is a separate entity. And so when I'm looking at this application, and I look at what the developers trying to bring and work within, I'm trying to understand as we, our responsibility as a planning commission to try to provide clarity and guidance on what the, what the intent is and what, what are we trying to do with this area of the Village of Ravanna? And what is the step down from the city, the village center and, and the density to rural? And what is the appropriate phasing? And I'll just say that, you know, as I stand now, I agree with Commissioner Firehawk. I don't think the county, I don't know that affordability is a place, I don't know where transit is in here, at these densities, I don't, I don't see affordable. And so I'm left feeling that, you know, I think we need to have a discussion or understanding about like, what, what is the intent for this area, Breezy Hill? And I'm, I'm not, I'm not debating the, you know, the precedent we set against gross and net as of today. But I also register, as Commissioner Parker said, is, it's not a very high density as we transition to the rural area. And so I, I would just like to get to a point where, as I say now, I'm, I don't know that I'm leaning towards, you know, supporting this application, but I do think some of the factors unfavorable need to be reconsidered or clarified when it relates to the night neighborhood model density, the cul-de-sac, the, you know, some of those concepts that are to be considered. And I welcome any, you know, helping the staff walk me through some of those factors. And some of them are kind of joined together to say, where's the tipping line? You know, how many do you have to be unfavorable for, you're unfavorable to the neighborhood model density? And, and how do you say ones apply and don't apply, given the individual parcel? So that was a rambling kind of response, but I'm, I'm left a little bit, a little bit, you know, unsure how to judge this against the neighborhood model density concept when we're wanting to reduce density and keep it at R one.
Can I respond? So to help, I think it is a little confusing because we do have the neighborhood model principles, which are discussed within the comprehensive plan that talk about pedestrian orientation and those twelve principles. And then I think the portion that you were reading is the neighborhood model district. And those are two distinct different things. While the neighborhood model zoning district, which this development is not proposing to be, would follow the neighborhood model principles, all developments in proposals in the development areas are evaluated against the neighborhood model principles in the comprehensive plan. So we go through those principles, and I've kind of identified those ones that haven't been completely addressed. Some of them are not applicable. Some of them, you know, depending on the type of development and what, in coordination with what zoning district they're going to. As I did the analysis under the R one, the intents and purposes relate back to the neighborhood model principles, but the principles are separate and apart from the district. I don't know if that helps.
Yes, that's fair.
So in, in any development area proposal, staff will be evaluating against those twelve principles. No matter if the recommendation of the master plan is a lower density development such as this. If you recall, as one example, if you recall, the previous application, when it first came in, was requesting modifications of street planting strips, sidewalk, curb and gutter, which is part of the neighborhood model principles, and we were recommending denial of those. And now they're providing, providing those form elements that follow that, those principles.
Right, yeah, I apologize for confusing. Yes, it is helpful. And, and I, so referring to the model principles, I see there's a few, one mixture of housing and affordability has not been met. I'm struck, you know, R one zoning doesn't allow for mixture of houses. And so then I'm only left to understand that it's because the affordable housing is not provided is why it doesn't meet the principle there. Am I interpreting that correctly?
That, that's correct. It was that one. And then the additional, the amenities, is one of the ones that I also identified as needing more information about and providing more amenities for this development. And if the commission.
Yeah, I was going down the line. I was going down, I was going down the line. So then interconnected streets and transportation networks. And so that's one of the things that it says has not been met. It's listed as cul-de-sacs as being one of the things. The future connection to the west is, I guess, not clear enough. I guess that's the over Carroll Creek areas, if I'm understanding that correctly, the future connection. And then, and then the third one is the development has only one vehicle connection to two fifty, and then the running deer is supportive. So so I guess that's, is the primary reason, the cul-de-sacs, that it's not been met, or is that it's, I mean, I'm looking at these three, but when I look at the plans, I see that there's future connections and interconnection between the Village of Ravanna and Running Deer, whether they want it or not, but that's a different thing, you know, so is it really just the cul-de-sacs that are, that are discussed in the neighborhood model principles?
Right, it's the cul-de-sacs and also the length of, of the streets. There's opportunity that I could see there to, to provide other interconnectivity in between those. The previous application had paths that kind of had that pedestrian access that broke up the, the blocks of houses as an example. So it, it's a combination of, of the cul-de-sacs plus the length of how long those streets are and not the, that principle in the comp plan talks about blocks and block.
Got it. And then the, the parks get it, they, they say that they, they have a pocket park, but there's no details on what that is, so it's hard to judge it.
Right, they, they said it would be picnic tables and, and grills, which I would anticipate children being included in this type of development. And so I think an active place base would be appropriate, such as, you know, an open playfield or even a playground structure for, for the neighborhood children to attend. I understand that there, you know, large lots, people might have their own play structures, but
And then I think, and so then the last one I see is relegated parking. And I'm, I'm trying to, I guess that says that it's front-loaded lots are expected in this development, so this principle isn't met. So I guess is that seems an R one rear-loaded parking, unless I'm, seems a little bit strange.
Well, you could have, you know, in large lot subdivisions like this, you could have the, you often see the garage turned to the side. So the garage isn't facing the street. And we would consider that kind of relegated when you pull into the side versus straight in, so that the garages don't face and the parking isn't just right on, on the street there.
So the driveway, front-loaded road, but then it'd be a side-loaded garage. But yeah, so we can't really judge whether the neighborhood had side-loaded garages, because we haven't seen anything conceptual about the plan, house plans or layouts, right?
Right. Or a, you know, just like what was outlined on the plan for lots outside of the stream buffers, you could also include language on the plan that, that says the, the garages will be side-loaded or, or something similar to that.
Appreciate it. And sorry, I appreciate the commission's time and humoring me on these questions application. I just wanted to. I just wanted to understand as we had, we're judging this plan, how it matches against what the, the vision is for the village of Havana and for this park. Um, thanks, uh, Megan for walking me through that.
Daniel, you good right now?
I'm good.
So we're going to go to Tim and then we'll go back to Rick.
Thanks. Actually, I think that this was a helpful discussion that we just had. Thank you, Megan. Um, I think there's another piece of this that warrants discussion, and that is the connection to running deer. Um, and I wonder if, if Megan, you and the, our VDOT representative could, could speak to that. And I'll just preface it by saying, with my long-term tenure in this county, it seems to me that as I looked through each of the times that we've had this before, it's the, the comments from the public, which are very important to me. Um, they sort of fell into two categories and that were the residents in Glenmore and the residents in the more traditional areas, many of which predate the 1980s agreement that sort of led us to our rural and development areas approach to the county. So as I look at the concerns of the folks in that more tradi- in the more traditional areas, and there's some other than running deer that were expressed in the first one as well. It was more about the impact directly on them, some of which has been, um, dealt with by, by the setback that Mr. Armstrong speaks to. And he spoke to his, his concern about the connection through that was a requirement. So from the county and from the state. So I wonder if you could speak to that because if, if, if that is a no changer, then it seems to me that we have these two communities coming at this from very different approaches that are strongly against this. Um, but that if the connection to running deer could be removed, I mean, yes, then I think it might. And again, we'd have to hear from the public, but they'd have that opportunity at the supervisor's meeting to, to do that. Whether this assuages their major concerns with this project now that there's more of a setback presented. Again, by Mr. Armstrong. Thank you.
Sure. I'll, I'll start, um, from the, the county's perspective. Um, as I stated in, in the staff report, our comprehensive plan and our, our policies and even our subdivision ordinance, um, recommends interconnectivity, especially when there's, um, a connection to a, a public street. Um, so that is where staff is coming from for, for, um, recommending the connection in addition to the master plan showing a connection, um, in that location. But we do have a, a comprehensive plan strategy that specifically talks about interconnectivity. So now let, I'll turn it over to Adam to talk about the regulations for VDOT as well.
Hello, my name is Adam Moore. I'm the assistant resident engineer for the Charlottesville residency. And the connection to running deer would be required here for any plan rezoning, buy right or otherwise, proposing a public street network be added to the state system for maintenance. The county essentially requires public roads for new subdivisions. Sometimes they entertain waivers for private streets. If the roads are public, then the network design must meet the SSAR requirements, the secondary system requirements. One of those requirements is connectivity, requiring at least two connections in different directions, meaning not two connections on the same road. And that existing, the connections to existing public roads take precedence over stub outs or, you know, planned future connections, uh, because it's something that can be effective day one.
Thank you. Yeah. I, again, I think this is important for the public, for the record, to make clear why, um, the applicant has said that he would be willing to pull it back. Um, or I, I believe I, I understood that from Mr. Armstrong that he would consider that. And, and the framework that we are all operating within based on staff, two staffs, um, approach. Thank you very much.
And Adam, don't go away. So let me just sort of extend backwards and go to Rick right quick. So you mentioned the stub out. So the stub out that's on, that's on the, uh, that's on, uh, page four of that, that indicates a potential crossing of, of, of Carroll Creek, which would connect up, which would connect west on that. That wouldn't, how would VDOT view that, that indicator there?
If the connection, if it was infeasible to connect to running deer, then it's, then it is possible or likely that that connection would suffice if it were made all the way to the property line. Um, but because the connection is, is right there to be made, uh, then that is a connection that, uh, would be required to satisfy the connectivity standard.
And so just to push a one and then I'll release, I'll, I'll sort of stop on this. So even if it were to go to a buy right development of 53 units, 53 houses, what would that connection need to be still?
It would still need to be there. If it had public roads, it would need a second connection.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Thank you, thank you, Adam.
Uh, I was actually wanting to follow up on Daniel's point and to clarify about that potential crossing of Carroll Creek. If, I, I know this is asking a lot, but if you look at page two of the April 23rd, 19, rezoning application for Breezy Hill. On page two, it shows, uh, TMP 94 dash 8A, which is part of the Breezy Hill application. It shows where there was to be a crossing of Carroll Creek. It is, by the way, at the narrowest section of Carroll Creek, running adjacent to Breezy Hill. And actually, it's the narrowest section running all the way down into Glenmore. However, because it's the narrowest section, it's shown coming in to tax map property 80 dash 56, which is owned by Juliana Gordon and Julianne Jackson. And it shows that path, that road, bike way, whatever it is. It's not really identified in the application what this is to be. It shows it coming in literally on their back doorstep, which is something that's not going to be realistic. But my point is that Carroll Creek poses a real challenge to be crossed here. And there is nothing in this application by this applicant to help pay for any of the future cost of an additional connectivity to the west. Now, beyond the Juliana Gordon and Julianne Jackson property lies property, tax map property 80 dash 568, which is owned by the gentleman who spoke to the planning commission this evening. And he has no intention of selling that property. So, but the point is that there is no proposal here for any money to be set aside to help the county in the future when, if and when in 20 years, 50 years, I don't know when. If that property beyond to the west of Cal Creek is developed, there's no provision for any set aside, any proffer, any funds to help cover the expense of that. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. And it doesn't specify whether it's a pedestrian crossing, a bike path, or whether it's to be a vehicular path. And obviously the cost of each of those would be very, very different.
Is there anyone else? So I will share that, um, my main, there's a couple of things that I'm sort of uncomfortable with and I don't, I don't know how to present these. But the first thing is, I think it's sort of, it was a, when, when the development area was, was drawn, I think it was, it would have been helpful if the entire community that sits on, 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 on running deer was not included. So that whatever, whatever that, the, the back property lines were, so that they were, they, they remained in the rural part of the community. Because I think what we have happening here is I think we have a master plan that's asking, that's trying to sort of mesh together and mash together two different philosophies of, of housing. And I don't know how to get around that. That's been something that got done in a previous, in a previous, uh, planning commission. And then what our, and our supervisors decided with that. But that's something that I, that I wrestled with. How do you in fact sit this kind of development next to this kind of community, realizing that these are really quite 180 degrees different in, in their approach to, to the housing and to, into the, into the way that they, they think they're going to experience life. So that's one thing that's sort of giving me some pause on this. The other thing that, and you've heard me, you've heard me colleagues talk about this before. I struggle with, with this kind of road system. I just, I struggle with a road system where there's one cul-de-sac, two cul-de-sacs, and the people in the front of the property are never going to have any sort of real opportunity to engage with the people in the, in the back of the property because there's no sense of community there. There's no sense of inter, of interconnectedness there. And I, I think for me, that's the piece that, that is talked about interconnected streets and the transportation network. So I'll set the transportation network aside, but the interconnected streets in a place that's being built. And even if it does come down to, uh, a lesser density, this really doesn't feel like a community to me. Now, that's not our role as, I understand that as planning commissioners to want to create community. But it is my role that I think to sort of say, is this, should we, or should I support a change when this feels as if it's not meeting some of the principles, which when we talk about neighborhoods? And so for me, the fact that this is a key part of what does neighborhood mean? And the way that it's set up on, on this particular plan doesn't feel as if to me, we're creating neighborhood. Now, I do believe we're creating a bunch of one acre lots and they're going to have reasonable houses on them. But I don't necessarily know that there, we're creating a community. And that's a big thing that's been, you've heard me speak about that before and you've heard me, you'll always hear me speak about that. The other piece is that, while I understand and assume that the two green spaces or the green spaces that are being left on, on the project, that one's a pocket park. And I agreed when I saw the whole idea, there's going to be some picnic tables and, and, um, and some grills there. That felt sort of odd to me, given that we're sitting on one acre lots. And why, I, why wouldn't I expect that there would be all the various grills that one could possibly have out there? And all the various picnic tables that one could possibly have in the backyards of all these houses? And so I was having a hard time understanding why that would become the placement of just those few items would create a, a gathering place for all these people. It, that didn't work for me. So that was another why I'm backing away from saying yes on this. And then, and then the other piece that I, I, and so that's the parks and recreation piece of it. And while we didn't see it, or at least I didn't see it on the cover sheet, and I brought my magnifying glass out. You know, it would be really nice, and this is just for Megan, for Charles, it would be really helpful. And I know there's a bit here, but if you could ask applicants to give us the, that, the, uh, the side bit in a one piece of paper, because it's hard to read that, particularly when you've got eyes that use bi- that use bifuncles. And, um, it's hard, just hard to sort of keep all that, to keep it in one place. When I, when I looked at, when I looked at it and I was trying, I was trying to sort of get a sense of, so why can't there be a different housing types out there? Why on one acres do we always have to have one different, the same kind of housing types? Why couldn't you have one acres, two acres together and come up with townhouses? Have a shared or, or have a different kind? We've seen some interesting things where the houses were perhaps a little bit different together, or they were together and they had side yards as opposed to front yards. All I'm saying is that I don't believe that the natural way that we do one acre is to stick a house in the middle of it or stick a house in the back of it and say, there we've got a house per acre. I think there's some different ways that you can site houses on, on, on that size property that in fact you could have different types of houses out there, a mixture of housing types up there. And so I was hoping to see that. I didn't see that. And so I'm, um, that's another. So those three things have pushed me to a place where, um, I would expect, I would have expected to see a bit more, um, variety and a, and a better use of the, of the pocket park. And certainly a, a group of houses that don't run all the way back to a cul-de-sac and then don't come to the middle and turn right and go to, and turn right, and turn right to a cul-de-sac. I would have expected to see something that said that this is a place that's inviting people to come and live and make this their, their, their new homes for some X amount of time. Um, and so I, I'm, I'm feeling, I'm, I'm in a place, I guess, where it wins. I'm in a place where I would not be able to support as I see it on these particular pieces of property. Yes, Rick?
I, I think, Ms. Chair, what you were thinking of is Eco Village, which, which this planning commission approved, where very much kind of a European model of trying to utilize as little acreage for the actual housing and leave the rest as open space. That would have been completely consistent with what the neighborhood is looking for, what the master plan is looking for. And I think what this body was looking for.
Thank you for, thank you for that, that, for, for encouraging that memory. So, so I've laid that out. Any other comments? Any questions for? Any other comments, questions? Ben?
Just, I think, um, just to clarify some of, uh, questions for and comments. Um, I, I agree with the statements that you made. I think, uh, having more interconnectivity, uh, without the cul-de-sacs would be possible on this property to, to be a little bit more consistent in the neighborhood model principles as we went through in detail. However, I, I don't think as all of the, uh, criteria laid out in the neighborhood model principles, um, are applicable and, and, uh, to, to this development, um, and, and should be, or, or should this, you know, perhaps this, this development be applied to this, um, development, uh, given the, the, you know, the, the structure and, and, and the conflicting nature of the different plans and, and activities a lot of this. Also that the density, just, you know, the, the density in this, in this, and then around this one with a more imaginative plan that does meet model, I think is, in my opinion, the right approach for this area. I don't think it, you know, it's not our four, but I, I don't, I, I don't have as much of an issue with the, the 80 or the 50. Um, we've already discussed the running deer connection that, that is required. Um, and I think the only outstanding piece that we've already discussed in previous is the larger transportation and the language inserted into the village plan or village of Havana master plan around, uh, the, the improvements required. Um, I don't know that we've, uh, come to a, you know, the last, my recollection of that when the transportation thought of is that several, several of those things may not be possible. Um, I don't remember exactly the, the nature of those, but it does make me wonder, you know, are we, I just want to be really clear that we give guidance to this. It's like what, what might be possible? Or is this, and not, and be clear with regards to, um, the stance on it, you know, uh, to some degree, to provide guidance to the applicant on what might be possible and, and inconsistent with the planning as opposed to, um, you know, continue to send it back and do different, different iterations of this. So I, I'll, I think the only other thing that we didn't really address was the, the education piece. Um, my recollection from that, from the staff report was that the, uh, middle school and high school was within capacity, but the elementary school would be overcapacity. What they know wasn't really clear was, was, was that at the proposed 80? Or was that by a right, by a right development? Or was that regardless of by right or at the asked additional density?
Megan, before, do you want to respond to that before I go to Karen? Or do you want to go to Karen first?
If you could go to Karen first, that would be.
All right, Karen. Okay, Karen.
Um, yes, I just, I just wanted to reflect briefly, um, Mr. Chair on your comments. Regarding neighborhood connectivity. I, I realize that at a certain point, the developer is trying to get enough units in here to make this. A viable project economically and they've dropped and dropped the density. But I do think that if looking at this site, it seems like you could provide. A number of pedestrian corridors between those long, long blocks of cul-de-sacs. And then also um, a trail network through the buffer potentially. I don't know how steep it is right there. Um, but there seems like, you know, you could actually create. A very inviting walkable community uh, where you would be able to traverse and visit your friends. Um, through a, you know, what we used to use in the city as green alleys. Um, you know, a series of those types of things. So. I, I know this will go to the board of supervisors regardless of our decision tonight. So I just wanted to provide uh, that additional guidance to the applicant.
Thank you.
So um. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? Was, was it concerning the schools? Um?
It was just getting some clarity on the, the comment or in the indication of staff report that the elementary school would be overcapacity and just trying to get some clarity. Was that? Going to be overcapacity in a by right or was it overcapacity? Like where was the tipping line of overcapacity for future development?
So I would, I would probably need to go back to schools because I rely on, on schools to, to provide that, that information. Um. And I apologize, I didn't get a clear, a clear answer um, about whether or not. It would, it would happen with the by right scenario or this rezoning. I know that they're looking at capacity now. At Stone Robinson. Um. So I, I can certainly circle back with you on that, but there was a concern from schools with this application um. In the capacity at Stone Robinson.
And if I might, I can add. So, so we know one thing that when, by time the projects sort of were, if it goes where it gets out of ground. The whole school system could change again. So, you know, we're looking at numbers now that are being projected now without some knowledge about. What the various pieces that are coming online in the next two to three years might be. Um, but. I'll, I'll just leave it there. Also, there's been some converse, there's been some conversations I may have mentioned to you. That actually our census was down by significant amount across, across the, across the system. And so what's, what's that, what's our census going to be like in, in two to three years? So some of this is, is still in flux, is still in significant flux because of the season we've sat in. Karen? Karen?
I'm just going to say, I'm, I'm just going to say something a little controversial. Which is that, are we, are we also expecting that people who buy homes on one acre lots? In this area will all go to public school? Uh, because I think that these, these housing. Uh, houses are going to be expensive and I don't know that everyone. Who would go there is going to send their children to our fine public schools.
Well said. Tim?
I think that, that Daniel has, has challenged us to be more specific in this third round. And um, I'm not sure that I'm prepared to go there. And Megan. Talked about places that she would have to go to, to, to get that. But we really. We all know what the issues are. And we know what the, the vast majority of the public comment has been about. Which is congestion and traffic. And so there's sort of two forces that are going here and one is. What is an ideal? Density and development form? For this parcel that's on the edge of the development area. And second. Is. If that is, is agreed upon, will that number of units still be too high? For the impacts that it will have. On the existing conditions. And I don't think any of us have an answer for that. And I think the applicant has tried valiantly. To come back with different alternatives and, and, and different shots at this. And I, I really feel Daniel's pain. On this. Um, and I don't have an answer. But I am inclined, I am, I'm disinclined towards this proposal as well.
Anyone else? Okay, so we're at that point in the, in the evening and in the discussion.
I, I have um. Prepared some motions, Mr. Chair, if you would love me to put them on the screen.
I, I do, but I, I also saw our council move up into the frame. Okay, he was just getting comfortable, okay. I saw him move forward, but that was, he wanted to sort of come in and say something that would be helpful to us all.
I was just going to suggest that Mr. Dosta put the suggested motions on the screen if they, if the commission's ready to make a motion.
Look how the two of you just worked in tandem. Thank you. Okay, and do, I see. Someone who is willing to. Rick, are you looking to come forward on this?
Chair, I'm not hearing numbers. Um, that provide confidence to me to make a recommendation for denial, but I'll go ahead. And move denial of ZMA twenty twenty-one zero zero four Breezy Hill. For the reasons stated in the staff report and the reasons stated by the planning commission this evening.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I can't see a second. I can't see, oh, there's a ten, is there a second? Are you seconding ten? So seconded by Tim, is there further discussion? Seeing no one, if you do want to discuss, take yourself off from you and speak because you're in that funny little, oh, that you're in the funny little thing next to you. So the motion's been moved by Rick and seconded by Tim. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, Matt, uh, Daniel?
No, just clarification, not discussion. Um, as presented, if it's for, uh, the motion is for all the favor. For the following factors as listed in this for all unfavorable. So there's five that I see here. And so a yea or nay that would have to be inconsistent to all of those.
Correct. That's the motion we forced to deny based on that. But also remember there's the other wrinkle, but also based on the conversation. By us this evening too. So it's not just, since that, in addition to the conversation we've had tonight as a, as a group. Okay. Madam, would you, would you, madam, would you call the, would you call the vote please?
Yes, Mr. Claiborne?
Oh.
Mr. Vivins?
No.
Mr. Vivins?
No, oh, no. No.
Mr. Randolph?
No.
Ms. Firehawk?
No.
Mr. Keller?
No.
And Mr. Bailey?
I feel really stupid here that. The, we're recommending. Denial, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just understand. Okay, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it's passed and um, so. The next step is to go to our supervisors as we know and with a break.
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify.
Please.
My understanding is that a no vote on a motion to recommend denial means that the denial is rejected, that the planning.
That's what.
Objected denial. So at this point, if there's another motion, that's uh, if, if the planning commission wants to make another motion, that motion to recommend denial has failed.
Got it. Yep. Okay, so we're back at zero. Correct. Whoop, I just lost you. Go forward. Go ahead and recommend another motion. I can't see. Do we have another motion?
So, so Mr. Chairman, this would be for approval, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to, to recommend. Uh, approval of ZMA twenty twenty-one zero zero four Breezy Hill. With the conditions recommended in the staff report. Is there anything else I need to say?
Nope, that's it. Good right now, I need a second.
Is, does Mr. Claiborne wish to state any rec, uh, reasons for recommending approval? That was part of uh, Mr. Dosta's suggested motion is that the planning commission uh, state the reasons for recommending approval.
So uh, Mr. Counselor, in the report, so it had favorable factors and unfavorable. And so could I say just for the favorable factors?
That would be appropriate.
Okay.
It's been modified. Uh, Daniel, I saw your hand go up, was that?
It was a question on uh. The. Possibility or process, I think we did it to like a friendly amendment or something to add some of the conditions from the conversation around the. Neighborhood model principles and the connected streets uh, or the, some of the things that um. As far I could mention, as far as, you know, and unfavorable says it doesn't meet a number of them. Uh, applicable neighborhood model principles. I know in, in the past, sometimes the staff has made recommendations for how to. Address some of those issues and I don't know what would be a. Possibility for, is that just captured in the comm, conversation? Or do we need something more formal in, in the adjustment to um, passing the, you know, making a motion?
So we could.
In other words, the site plan that we saw, let's.
So if, if Corey was willing to have a friendly amendment, so we can, moving on. The whole idea about connectivity, the whole idea about how we use the green space, the whole idea, the sort of the discussion around um. Uh, the parks, the parks and recreation amenity space, the conversation about. Uh, those, those items would be something which could be amended to, which could be included in his, in his motion if he were so. Um, willing to do so, as I'm looking at it, I think, are you typing sir or are you? Andy?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. I didn't know if you were typing or if you were. I, if you heard my, my recommendation that if we, we were including in, in, in the, in the recommendation to approve. Sort of conditions around connectivity and conditions around the, the amenity space and, and conditions about. Those things which we did talk about, things in way to, to sort of improve the, the project, if that would be. Um, if that's a friendly amendment to, to court, to, to Corey's um, motion.
The extent that the commission wants to make additional conditions, it should, it should be specific on those. Um, commissioners can suggest conditions to the other. If Mr. Claiborne wishes to amend his original motion to include those conditions, that's up to Mr. Claiborne as the original mover.
As the original mover. So it's your call, sir.
I, I'll follow that. I think I've struggled with how to make it concise, if you will. Right, so we talked about a lot of stuff. Um. Counselor, any recommendations on, on that, how to make?
Maybe Karen can help you, she's good at words.
Okay, I see, okay.
Karen?
Okay, so I, I guess, uh, two that we discussed. Uh, and it, and there may be more, but um, to add to this motion. That the applicant include defined and improved amenity space to include recreational facilities. And also that the uh. Site plan be, or the uh, plan be amended to include a trail network through the buffer and to connect. The cul-de-sac streets through a pedestrian connection, thus allowing a, a comprehensive. Trail network throughout the development. And, and, and that way we don't tell of exactly where the trail goes because he has to work on topography and such.
Very good. That's good by me.
So that's, you accept that amendment. Tim?
I wonder if we could see the favorable and unfavorable list to, to just make sure that we've ticked off each thing that. Because we're working off of that, those would be what we would be adding to or subtracting from.
Can you do that, Megan?
Yes, I was um. Typing up. Ms. Firehawk's revisions to the condition. So if we also want to take a look at that, we can, we can do that. So here are the, the factors favorable. Let me know if you want me to move to the unfavorable.
So everyone all right and you'll have to unmute yourselves. Everyone all right to go. If you don't want to move, just unmute yourself for now. Okay.
Here are the unfavorable factors.
And so this is the piece where there was a conversation about particularly number two. And where's the, the?
That's number five, the neighborhood model principles.
Number five. And then that was the whole list that Daniel would recall and talked about this now.
Right, and so I um, here are the motions again. And the first two, I can um. Number these instead of full point. First two were included in the staff report.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I just want to confirm, do, do you also want number three with the applicant um, defined in the amenity? Um, space to include recreational facilities with the second.
I believe that's what we, I believe that's what we said.
Okay, and then revise the trail network through the buffer and connect the cul-de-sacs to create a comprehensive trail.
I believe that's what, yeah, I believe that's what Karen added. And, and Corey accepted too.
Okay.
Tim?
So I'm still having, as much as I have been a proponent for connectivity. I, I still feel that running deer neighborhood in particular. Is getting the short end of the stick on this. And I would like to not see the full vehicular connection. There. Even though we've been told that it's difficult, but we were also heard from Adam that there's this, I forget the term. Of how you could. Stop it just shy and you could have the pedestrian connection. And my hope would be that these two neighborhoods would over time. See the benefit of the vehicular connection. Um, that they don't see now because they see an infringement on their traditional neighborhood. That needs to be pointed out predates. The agreement in the county that led to the development areas separate from the rural areas. I think that there is a rural area protection that needs to somehow be built into this and I need that for my support.
And I don't, how do we, how could we do this? Karen? Karen?
I, I had asked, uh, yes. I, I asked staff before this meeting, um, Charles Rapp particularly, not you Megan. Um, i- if it would be possible to do something such as have bollards. That could be taken down in the need to provide emergency services. But that it would not be a vehicular connection. And my understanding was that bollards. Um, would not be acceptable, that it needed to be a full on road connection and. And, and I don't see why. I, you know, if you, if you buy a lot in this development. in this development all the way in the back, then you are, you could be acknowledging that you have a long drive to get out to 250, but in case of emergency, there would be an additional exit that could easily be opened by rescue crews or fire to let people out, say if a storm came and blocked the other entrances, so I guess I just want to push again on that option, as I've seen that done in other places. And, and that's for, that's for staff or our traffic engineer, perhaps.
Over Charles, perhaps, they come in, Charles and Megan, they come in.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Firehawk, um, as you mentioned, I have seen that done before, I have not seen it done on VDOT maintained roads, uh, I've seen that done in city environments where they maintain their own roads, so I would defer to Adam more as to what might be acceptable to VDOT if they do do, uh, have allowed removal of bollards, uh, for these type of emergency access roads in the, in the past.
No, essentially, if it's, if the road is maintained by VDOT, it's got to be main, it's got to be kept open to the public, all members of the public, all the time.
And Adam, what was the S system that you said, what was the name of that?
SSAR.
SSAR.
Mm-hmm. State regulations governing the acceptance of secondary streets into the, uh, state maintenance system for maintenance.
Thank you. Hi, Andy.
So, Mr. Chair, could I also point out that the county's own subdivision ordinance, specifically, uh, section 14 dash 409B of the county subdivision ordinance requires that all public streets within a subdivision be extended and constructed to a public property lines to provide vehicular and pedestrian interconnections to future development on rural areas, and so that the county's own subdivision ordinance, um, requires that. Now, there is an allowance for exceptions to that, but, uh, it, it's not only consistent with, uh, but planning practices, but it's actually part of the subdivision ordinance, um.
Thank you, Tim.
Well, I realize that we're trying to modernize our thinking, both in the county and in the, in the Commonwealth, however, I have been all over the world where there are retractable bollards, it would be an expense to the developer, but retractable bollards that are keyed to the fire departments and the, and the safety communities, and they can push a button, and not a physical button, an electronic button on their phones, and do it, and I think that this is one of those cases where, um, our regulations need to have an ability for an exception, thanks.
So, I'm assuming that was part of the discussion, what we needed to get, we needed to get the, uh, the revised motion made, and then second, I assume it's still the, the modifications, the amendments worked for you, Corey, prior to this discussion about the, the, the running deer.
That's correct, prior to this discussion.
Okay, and Daniel, where you, I saw that you were, you were looking to second that, okay, and then we had a bunch of, we had, we've had a series of discussions about running deer, and folks, I don't know how you, uh, hearing what you're saying, and I think that's a piece of information that we might need to push to our, to our supervisors, but basically, we've got, we've got our own ordinances, and we've got the Commonwealth that says if this is a public street, which is something that we want, that it needs to have connectivity there, and how that gets worked out, I'm not sure how this body reckons, or doesn't reconcile those two pieces, the ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, and then the Commonwealth's ability to accept a street into, to its public network. So I will just, I will just sit that before us, Tim.
I think that we have a commitment to our rural areas, and while this is really complex for us, because it is in the development area, right on the edge of the rural area, this is an area that has traditionally been rural, and it is on that edge, and I would encourage others to join me in voting against this motion.
Karen? Karen, did you want to say something?
Oh, I was just, um, I, uh, I was just wondering if it could be a, I'm, I'm, I know we're beating this to death, but I'm wondering if it could be a private street, it, it has to be two public road, VDOT approved entrances, is that, is that true? Or could one be a private street if its only purpose is emergency, and then it could have bollards? Is that, is that out of the question?
I, I don't know whether or not, so you're saying that, where it makes a left-hand turn there on the street, I think it's Street B.
So, um, one of the, the private street criteria in, in the subdivision ordinance is that a private street not connect to public streets?
Well, so then, then that will eliminate this possibility there.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
So we have a motion before us, it's been properly seconded, and there's been discussion, is there additional, are there additional points to be discussed here? Hearing them, would you call, call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
No.
Ms. Firehawk?
Yes.
Mr. Randolph?
No.
Mr. Vivens?
Yes.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
So. Please?
We have a tie vote, three, three are four, and three are opposed.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
Sure, we have a tie vote, we have three yeses.
I don't think, I don't think so.
We had, we had, uh, four, four votes in favor.
Four to two.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So, the motion carried, but it carried with advice, it had carried with counsel, counsel carried with modification, which I believe Megan to be able to share the, the full, the full motion with Mr. Armstrong, um, and so we've also, I think we've also done some things in asking our supervisors to give some serious consideration about what does this, particularly in the village of Ravenna, what does the development, what does the, the, um, the development zone, does it need to be reconsidered? Does it need to be looked at, and then the, the piece that I think that, that Mr. Keller and, and Ms. Firehawk were speaking to, how do we, how do we sort of engage with the transitions in a way that helps the whole communities as a way, and helps the whole communities in sort of this, the esprit and the lifestyle that they've become accustomed to, which is where I think you're going to, but how do we, how do we not impose that kind of radical change on that, on a boundary place? And that's something I think we, we're pushing forward in our narrative to our, to the supervisors. Uh, so Mr. Armstrong, there you are, if you will, be in contact with, um, Megan, with Charles, as you, as this issue was, because your project was forward to be, to our supervisors.
Thank you all very much, I've heard what you said, and I think we can do those things.
Thank you, folks, uh, what are our committee, uh, Charles, do you have anything from last week?
Afternoon report?
Committee reports, please. Karen? Nothing, okay, so we also, one of the things I'm going to sort of just, since there isn't any community groups when we go to all the new business, uh, so this, this particular project, I think, has a, has a number of elements that when we move into the consideration of the comp plan, that Charles said I think should be smack dab in the middle of that, sort of what's the reality, what's the, what's the, what's the reality of the, of the, of the traffic situation all, on all of these projects, when in fact, sometimes the traffic situation's not going to change for decades, but the projects seem to be forward, how do we in fact balance the fact between emerging developments and, and existing communities? How do we sort of do that in a way that works for the characteristics of those two communities? And then the, the big one here, that I think that Rick pointed out at the very beginning, the sort of settling, formally settling on net versus gross density, and how do we, how do we sort of move forward with that, what's the way in which we, we inform, uh, applicants who bring projects to us, and so that, so in fact, there's a, there's a, there's a realized and, and an actual clarity, and you've got some ideas on that, I, I, I know, on, on how, how everyone is quite aware of what the bounds of their, the, the property bounds that they can effectively use, um, for a particular project. So those are the kinds of things that we've wrestled with for a while, and I think this particular project has, has had, has had a number of those, Karen. Karen?
Yes, thank you for bringing, yes, thank you for bringing up those points, and I also want to add to that, that as we look at these growth areas and connectivity in the future, that we be more mindful of not dumping the, the second connections or third or fourth connections necessarily into small rural neighborhoods. I, you know, we, the, the connection to Running Deer Drive was in the master plan, um, and I don't think that is, I, I don't like that plan, I don't like that idea, I know that we just approved it, but, um, I just want to be more mindful of the impacts on the existing neighborhoods and be more sensitive to how we juxtapose growth, growth areas.
True. Tim?
You know, that's, I think, I think Karen said it well, and I, and I think that we, we also need to, to reflect on, on Daniel's points earlier, and I think in, in Megan taking us through the, the pieces that, that we all know, really, but, um, we have a project that's, that's trying and, and comes back to us in three different ways, I think that we, staff and, and commissioners need to have a point at which we can agree what that sweet point is, and I don't think that we, we got there tonight, but we work towards it, and I think we work towards it well, and maybe, maybe Charles and staff can, can think about some, some guidelines, how we might be able to get closer, hopefully, we're not going to have so many projects like this that are right on, on an edge, that, that create these kinds of issues, but I am aware that, um, as there is more development, we may find ourselves facing more of these, and I think it does also bring up the issue, I didn't, I don't want, didn't want to muddy the waters with, with rural DUDs, um, because I think maybe even in the, in our new comprehensive plan and our policy, we, we may be actually moving away from that, maybe not, maybe that's just me thinking that, but there seems to have been kind of a, a movement away from that, because historically, that was the kind of curve-linier cul-de-sac kind of development, but, um, maybe it can be envisioned in, as, as Rick said, about the different housing, housing types, I think it was Rick, um, in, in these, where there would be a great deal of open space, and so, um, maybe we need to ask the staff to just take a few minutes and, and, and look at that and see how something like that might apply in cases like this, and if not this, if we're seeing, if we do see an uptick in, um, as the, uh, demographic information that we're gaining post-COVID, if they, if that continues, then I think we may see more pressures on across America, developments in the rural areas that are not far from small, smaller population centers like Charlotte's, and what, what forms we envision those taking, and what the policies would be for those. So that's, that's my thoughts after, after this coming back several times, I think it was an important series of discussions tonight, thanks.
Is anyone else, Rick, you usually have to have, uh, then, thank you, everyone, uh, our next meeting is August the 3rd, so we will not see each other next week, but we'll be back, uh, back together on August the 3rd, and if your plans change, please let Charles, Callan, and, and, uh, and me know, so that we, we're, so we're, we're aware of how many people will have on a, on a particular meeting. Thank you, uh, Council, for your advice, uh, during this evening, and, uh, we'll see you on the 3rd, yes, Tim, Tim, too.
I hate to make this go longer, but I think that there was an important, um, MPO tech meeting today, and I wanted to call everybody's attention to it, you could download the agenda to get the specifics, but we did move on for smart scale projects, um, that would, uh, that were recommended by staff, there's six in the list, you can see the ones that were not, uh, selected, again, based on staff recommendation, a lot of discussion about several of these, and that will continue, obviously, with MPO, um, and as you all know, there will be city and county smart scales, and there will be planning district smart scales as well, so this is kind of the first shot in the next round of the smart scale. The other thing is that, um, we all discussed the electric vehicles in light of, of the efforts in the county, um, building, parking lot, and there was a draft report presented on the electrical, electric vehicles, um, I did not think, and, and a number of my colleagues did not think it got into the detail, or that maybe it was even as current as what is happening and being done today, but it's a, it's a good start, and it's, uh, maybe worth a quick perusal by you all. I would say that one thing that came up from Chuck Proctor that was interesting in an article that he'd read, is that in Indiana, there's an experiment in a, in a section of highway, um, between, it's, the, the research is being done Purdue, Purdue University in conjunction with a German firm, and is looking at whether there are ways that one could actually charge cars as they're driving along. And so then, one begins to think about where are we going with this whole infrastructure of electric pumps, if you will, electric charging stations? It, it just shows that the technology is moving along so quickly, where are we going to be in all of this? And of course, we keep hearing hydrogen coming back to the floor as a discussion, um, there was also a sidebar, there were a couple of reference pieces that are going to be of interest, and they will show up in the minutes for this meeting, though what Colorado's doing, and actually what a group within VDOT is looking at, and I guess there's been a sidebar study that at least was arguing, and this may be pre-COVID data, that, um, hy- hybrid vehicles seem to be, have a, a smaller, um, carbon footprint than electric vehicles, when you factor in, um, where the, what's, where the electricity for the charges coming from. So, again, it's all, it's all shifting, but you all had asked about the, the EVs, and so it was a discussion point, thanks.
Anything else? All right, folks, see you on August the 3rd. Okay, dude.